All right, so we're back to the roll call. Um, we have Bonnie Green on Zoom. John sent an email that he was ill today. So we have Larry Socier, Dave Mills, Rick Grant, Ray Simon here along with the Chair. Well, I think, Rick, it's your turn to be the voting member tonight. And Bonnie was the last time we had anybody out. But Bonnie, you can still participate, of course.
Thank you.
Ah, right.
Steve, who is this gentleman beside Larry?
That's Dave Mills.
You're Dave Mills, okay. All right. Didn't say his name. Dave Mills, okay.
Thought I had the agenda with me, I do. Well, the first item that we had originally, they're going to come in in June, that's Arbor Arthur Ebbsohn. Pardon me?
Elvis Ball. He just signed a contract with the US Friday. Sending that.
He'll be submitting a shoreland zoning app for him.
That's in Resource Protection.
Yeah.
You're gonna move the probable minutes further down?
Why don't we put that at the, at the end? I bought my car to get a pen, but I haven't even bought it. If someone has one, you want it. You have an answer? Yeah. Thank you. Um, okay. We have no local business. So we'll move on to what we had as item B. Is John Caposa, who had previously filed for subdivision approval and it now
is a different amendment.
Asking for an amendment. Paul Rup is representing him. This is called the Blaisdell Hill subdivision.
Yes, sir.
That's from last month, right?
Yep.
Is this a different map, Paul, than we had?
Slightly, yes, because when I got back last month, I noticed I hadn't left something off.
Okay.
This is the new one. And here's the another five, after taking copies last month.
Somebody needs one.
So tell us, Paul, what's if I'm looking, you're, let me go back. Well, tonight, all I'm looking for is acceptance of the application. Uh, schedule a site visit if you need that necessary. The application contains the two sizes of the previous, um, No, you want the map? Oh, no, no. The application contains copies of the recorded plans going back to the first subdivision in 2007. The subsequent ones, I think, in 2009, 2011, and the last one in 2013. What he's asking, what John is asking for with this amendment is to restore the line between what we've called today, just lot three, and other was created lot three, lot three A, which in the previous were two lots to follow through there. Now, the reason is that John is selling that, he's selling pretty much everything except for remainder open state plus seven. The prospective buyer banks or lenders will not lend against. They want, they want the residential portion and what commercial force and the storage units are two separate lots.
So lot three is where the storage units are.
Correct. And that was the original lot three. It's a little, what we did was made it a little bit larger. Uh, lot three A, which is where he built his, his current residence behind the storage units, will have access to a 30-foot access season. So there's no new driveways, no new impervious area or anything. Um,
So that's really already being used?
Oh, yeah.
To access his, that's where his residence?
Yes. There was, if you remember, there was a driveway or accessway that ran along to lots, so it's now lot six. But that portion is under Amendment four was discontinued or and that, and that property was conveyed into the walkers, the owner of lot six. So he's going to finish extinguishing any theory in that. The small portion, I think of 1,400 square feet, maybe a little bit more, will be conveyed to the walkers, just to straighten the line out, so that it's not that 3.8-foot jog in that line.
Is that that blue dotted area?
That blue dotted area shows what the former location is, that, like, oh, yeah. So that's I had no new building, no, there's no building, no new lots, no change in impervious areas. There's just a small change in the lot areas, which are summarized in a table. Um, as I approach it, I guess I consider them there will change, but since it's a recorded subdivision.
Yeah. So how many, how many lots are being amended?
Just about three and three A. Well, including six, if you consider the additional area being conveyed into lot six.
It's assuming the walkers both.
They will.
They will.
They will. I talked with John, they will. I don't have anything expressed in writing, but I know they will.
There's nothing free in the bill today.
John's not asking anything, the annihilation for it or the hassle, so I'm just going to give you a little bit of way ahead. Thank you. And, yeah, this is, I really didn't know what to file for submission, so I just used my best guess, obviously, the plan. You have the deed, current deed, because again, he changed ownership, it's now in the, it's a revocative trust. Uh, so that changed. Uh, you have the list of the adjoiners, which are quite numerous in this case. Uh, and like I said, you have reduced scale copies of the old recorded plans. If somebody want, I realize on the reduced scale plans, the printing is small, but the important part is, is to trace the history of the line between these two lots.
I think I emailed Bill Monago a copy of this. I don't know if he's spoken with him. So, obviously, water should.
I felt there was no need for storing.
Yeah, I mean, I, I told him, I thought it was just an adjustment of the line.
That's basically all it is, Steve.
Um, Why don't we first entertain a motion to accept the application?
Make a motion to accept the application?
Second, second by David, motion by Larry. Any discussion on accepting the application?
Yeah, I just want to ask Paul, the, um, the decision, decision on Amendment four.
So I, I haven't really looked for it. Yes, if it's really urgent and the town can't find it, I mean, the town, I believe it was recorded, so town can go online and get it. And you get 500 free copies as a subscriber.
We don't want to go there right now.
Yeah, I don't know whether I went and looked for it. I thought, at one point, I'd have looked for that.
If now, I mean, oh, I know it happened in my files.
Well, um, yeah, I couldn't, I want, I tried to get the town file today, but I couldn't get out here in time to get it. But I figured we, we have to send notices to a voter. So I think we'll be back next week, but uh, what about a vote on accepting the application?
We'll be back when?
Next month. Sorry. Weeks and months, they run together. Uh, all in favor of accepting the application?
Yeah, pending the decision, I guess, in my opinion.
Well, I mean, we're only accepting, we're not saying it's complete.
Right.
You know, we're just saying, we've got an application in front of us. We have to have I think the next item would be whether, given the change here, is it necessary to have a site visit? The people. Yeah, I can expect the changing of line.
Changing of line, nothing's changed physically, it's just a lot, lot line.
Yeah.
Are all the pens or markers involved where they belong?
They were the last time I visited the site. No guarantees that they're there today. I know the ones won't be there. I haven't put the new ones. I'm not going to put the new ones in until it's approved for it.
Well, we're looking at looking at very significant changes. Unless someone really feels it's necessary to have a site visit.
Paul, didn't you say at the last meeting that the line was existing there at one time? You're just putting it back to wherever it was.
Correct. If you go back to 2007, 2009, it was there. We have from 2011, we put that out, we weren't supposed to do that.
We have to figure out a B.
That's the one thing I well, it's either I'll bring up a check Monday or have John give.
So I think it's a fee of 100 plus 50 for each lot affected by the revision.
What did you say? It was 100 plus?
Plus 50 per lot. The amendment.
It's three lots. You're affecting three A, three.
Three, so probably to be, yeah, to be um, and we'll have to, and your permission, I think, has a list of all the butters. So the the issue, I guess, would be
Probably the butters are going to cost more than any, or the certified notices are going to cost more.
You know, we're kind of discussing that.
The certified mail goes around six or seven dollars a piece.
Right. So so the issue is whether you, on behalf of your client, wants to do those notices or whether you want the town to do it.
I'd rather have the town do it.
Thank you, Paul.
Right.
Thanks.
I think it's a lot safer.
Oh, yeah, yeah. It, it's easier to do it now.
Got one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10. Guess we don't have to notify John. And, and walkers, they're twice, right?
Yes.
So that's 11, 12,
Wow.
13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, 19, 20. One of your butters, I count, they don't.
Well, one of those adjoiners, you're not going to find in the town tax records.
Uh huh.
And off the old Lewison Road. It's the one there by Como, because Como split their property. I did the survey on that last year, but that doesn't show up in the town tax records.
So maybe 21?
No, it's, it's in the west, it's in there, but I'm just saying. Nope.
That's old Lewison Road.
And that's why it doesn't have a tax map. Well, I think it's, uh,
Opening.
Yeah, yeah. And that's why you see lot 25 appearing twice, because I don't know how the statistics might assign the name. Expect that 25 will be the one for Carlisle and 25-1 will be for Como, we think.
Well, let's see. So if we say, what did I say? Did I say 14?
You said 21.
You said 20.
Of 20.
I don't know what the cost of certified sales they should.
Well, it is, it is something like.
And it only used to be $5 and something.
Now it's like $6.90. It's, it's gone up quite a bit.
Yeah. Want to say $10 per?
Yeah. So I'd say a $20 escrow and then he'll get any money back. All right. So, again, people comfortable just sending out the notices, notice just the next meeting. No site visit, formal site visit. I guess if anyone wants to visit, it's John can do it on their own.
That, I mean, it's, it's right there off the Blaisdell Road.
And the storage unit business is active? You still have?
Yeah, yeah.
Well, I know someone during the winter had kind of contacted and acquired, they said they were trying to buy it and they had some kind of hang up with their bank.
Yeah, that's essentially what it is right now.
All right.
Right now, we need these additional copies.
Yeah, we'll, yeah, just leave them on the table and we'll take them from you tonight. But the application at town, it's the same.
Yeah. It's just everything else the same, once it comes to it.
Doesn't miss the room.
That. Actually, no. Well, I, I had emailed, um, Andy that I thought that that's not planning board matter.
Yeah, you could take care of it.
Right. Did you hear from the code enforcement? Did you call them?
Yes.
What did he tell you?
You guys are going to call me.
So Mr. Willap?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right. Because you're not building anything new.
Right, yeah, no.
You're, you're going to use an existing.
Yes.
Right.
That's all his stuff right there.
So, yeah, so I had looked at this last week. He communicates, sent an email to the code enforcement that he could handle this. Don't have my email here with me, but so I think you may want to go in and talk to him Monday. He'll be in the office on Monday.
As far as he was concerned, he was fine. He just wanted
Well, no, he has to do what, he has to have you file what's called a site review application. That's on the website. If you look under, if you go to the town of Monmouth, do you have internet access then? There's a website for the town of Monmouth. And under the planning board, it has applications. And there is an application for what's called a site review. So because you're creating a business in a residential lot, you have to fill out that application, kind of explain what you're doing, list who your neighbors are, and then he's got to review it. He's got to apply the site review requirements. So sometimes with different businesses, you know, he has, if you're going to put up a sign, he has to approve where the sign is going to be. Um,
I've been doing it.
Right. Um.
Trying to get small.
Right. Right. And sometimes it's, you know, explaining how you're going to handle, um, say, oil and other hazardous materials. So I'll, I'll call him too on Monday and tell him that you're going to stop in or I'll email him.
No, I can get hold of him. Last time I talked to him, someone jumped in.
No, well, what day, Ray, did I email you? It was like Tuesday of last week, I thought.
Yeah.
It was Monday or Tuesday of last week.
Yeah.
Well, you know, we're, we're in a situation, we have a new code enforcement officer.
New recording secretary.
Yeah.
And some old, now, signing board man.
Yeah, so I, I'm sorry, I assumed he would communicate with you.
It's all good.
Just a moment. The structure that you're going to be utilizing. How big is that? Is that 4,000 square feet? Five?
Yeah, it's 36 by 44. 36 by 44.
15, it's under 1,600 square. You've got under 1,600.
Let's just make sure we're bigger than that. Let's just double check while you're here.
It's next time.
16?
36. It's under 1,600 square feet.
It's an existing structure.
Because it looks pretty damn big. Up on the road.
No, that was your assessment too, Ray, that this is the code enforcement, wasn't it? That's when I looked at it, I thought, given the size.
No reason why Andy can't. He was questioning, he wasn't
he wasn't sure what he meant.
Yeah, see, the, the, he hasn't dealt with this before, so see, what happens when you're making a change? Neighbors have to be notified.
Right.
So that if they have some kind of concern about noise, light, hazardous materials, he's got to really kind of have a mini hearing. So he might not be able to issue that permit on Monday. He might have to say, okay, we have to send out this notice to your neighbors. Yeah, well, of course, it's anybody across the street as well. Well, somebody owns the land loan.
Yeah.
So, so they, you know, have to be notified, but it shouldn't be a complicated process for you. And I'm sorry, I, I had assumed that, we didn't even put you on the agenda, because I said, Andy, you can deal with this, but I'll have to have a talk with him.
It's all, it's all too much.
All right.
All right, thank you, Matt.
Yeah. Okay, so we're all set with you, Paul, on that?
Yeah.
Next thing I have on the agenda is the Myers. I understand is another
zoning application in another one of my projects.
Yeah.
There are nine copies.
Okay, anyone need?
I think everybody needs.
This is the same one that I got here. I might have taken the one from the town.
Yeah, and obviously, there's more detail right there.
Oh, there's more detail in this one.
Here is instead of pictures, I only picked the ones
He's got, now, is coming now.
Oh, is it coming now?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, oh.
There should be nine copies. I mean, I got one, you're already, yeah. Do you have one?
Oh, okay.
There you go.
Thank you. So where is this cottage, which lay, lay cock and maw? Um, then, such as you have 20, like 26. Bruce Wayne, Bruce Wayne is essentially a driveway into the lot. You, from the existing pictures, you'll see that there's an existing cottage on there. Nine conforming structure on a nine conforming lot. Myers opposed to put an eight-foot addition onto the other side. Uh, do this, if you look at the plan or even one of the pictures there is to take four feet off the front of the cottage, move it to the westerly side or the rear of the cottage. That increases the setback to the lake, about four, that four feet. Um, the plan shows the tabulation for the square footage, is my understanding of the Nordians. They can involve buildings on the lot, they can be up to 1,000 square feet, because they're between 25 and 75. Um, and they would come in at just under 1,000 square feet. That's including the three sheds that are on the lot. What's the size of the lot, Tony?
Uh, over 14,000 square feet. It's a lot that goes back to the 1950s, coming out of that old area, it was known as the Wimmer, Wimmer property. And, uh, it was the norm, it's, I love it. Find originally about 19, probably 1950s. Unique circumstances of the lot, you have the lake to the easterly side, and you have a small tributary stream that runs around the northerly and westerly side. Access is through the lot owned by one, I think it's a West Ruski out of Rhode Island.
Yeah.
Yeah, that used to be owned by West Crawford.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
You can know it for that way.
Yeah, we did a review there, years ago.
Um, immediate joiner to the north and to the west is now a family out of Massachusetts. It's, it's many, many years, it was still a letty out of Columbia. The letty sold it last year. Again, on the adjoiners, it's how records won't show that or don't reflect that yet. What I, they were bringing for mailing address.
Yeah, but yeah, it could probably be on the, there.
Yeah, that's where I got it. That's, that's correct. Um,
So is there a foundation under this?
No, there is no foundation, correct. It appears on concrete pads.
Yeah.
That's essentially what they would go with.
Paul, can you run through on the structure?
All right, what I show green showing on the plan, of course, we really shouldn't be discussing this until we get the application accepted being complete, uh, we've had up to a care person. But the green will be the resulting structure. The orange lines are what's there now.
Okay.
The southeasterly corner of the existing structure is just 24 and a half feet. Now, still the dead corner, the rest of it's all 25 feet. But like I said, it's important to take four feet off, we're just to the back. So the the square footage of the original national stays the same, and we're just adding that eight by, I think it's 17 feet.
It's about the only direction you could go in.
Yes, yeah. Yes, I, I know the last month you were batting this around and that. It's all, I recommend it, don't go to the southeast side.
Well, it's kind of low. Because it's, yeah.
There I analyze it all out, shows the stream. Shows the setback to the stream, which is the nanopole. Or
There's no septic on the property?
No, and that's addressed what, what Steve does is he contracts with a firm like Nickerson, Roy Nickerson or that, for porta potties in season, and it's all used seasonally.
Yeah.
Uh, interestingly enough, is I forgot this, though, updating records, the still a letty property has a holding tank on that house. I don't know if the Prescott, which is two, two lots, more than the I don't think so, because there even are weather situations at this size. But, uh, for time being, just proposing to continue to contract with somebody that had under what, when are they brought in, Steve?
What's up?
When are you, when is your porta potties brought in?
When does it come in?
Yeah, when, when do you have them bring them in?
I have them made till the end of the season, till we stop using them. They serviced it every week. They serviced it every week.
A copy of that contract gonna be supplied to the CEO, or? Oh, it should be twice.
Yeah, yeah.
Probably as far as the.
Yeah, we'll bring it in next month.
Yeah.
Probably don't get placed in a mess, he's gonna do it first.
Usually does it first in that.
Yeah, well, we'll be, let's let's work, remember most and do a step the app.
Make a motion to accept the application.
Who seconded?
David. Any? Discussion on acceptance, all in favor? So, um, this one's clearly, we're gonna need a site visit, so.
Not with these.
Yeah.
We need a four-by-four to get there?
No, you don't need a four-by-four to get there, but they wanna tear up, because limited parking down there. Oh, drive down into the driveway to the cottage, you'd have to park up by.
So let's see, so we gotta send out notices to the butters. Usually what we do now is we send out a notice that we've received the application. We got a date for a site visit, and then, you know, a lot of times we'll say we're maybe reviewing this at a new meeting. So the issue is for us having enough time before the site visit to get the notices out. So Darcy is sort of new at this, so we gotta build in, what's what's three weeks from tonight? That would be the thirty-first.
No, June first.
That would be June first, and that would be the week before the meeting.
Yes.
But that, doing it three weeks from tonight, might give us enough lead time to get notices. We do a site visit, then we notify Bill Monagle.
June first, what time?
Well, we're gonna see, we might have some, and we have at least one other shoreland matter, so. Could we do it at five-thirty? That workable?
Hey, I'll make it work for myself.
Is Burke five-thirty?
Yeah, cause I think we're gonna have another one.
First, Larry.
First.
Then we got to ease on this.
Yeah, that hasn't been paid, again, I didn't know.
Well, where does he, where does this gravel driveway come out on?
That continues around and comes down on Pine Drive. You access the site going up the Packer Road, turn into Pine Drive. Uh, you wander way down through Pine Drive, and.
Split up to the left.
Yeah, yeah. And there is a whole bunch of clients or people with camps going further, you're gonna be a lot. And you're gonna work down around.
I'm gonna, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay.
Welcome for Pine Drive.
Anyone else want a location, or anything?
You know it already.
All right, let's see, true, right then. What's a fifty-dollar fee?
It's not the greatest gravel room, I thought you said, right?
How many dollars?
So this is called Bruce Wayne here. In five hundred feet, I think there's only four or five.
It's there.
I'm gonna save it to go in from the lake, you should have the list. Well, I could give you. And away by. And why not? Well, still the letty's the narrow lot, basically, always. But whether you got long. Yeah, but then, above that are Robinsonaires. Once you get into that part, you're.
You want to buy thirty, I would say, this can give us enough. Anyway. You would ask for fifty and seventy.
You got to check them today, another twenty.
Is that?
We get checked up to the town office.
Yeah. What is it, how much is it?
Uh, one twenty.
One twenty, yeah.
I didn't, I just didn't.
Yeah, it's, you know, sometimes until we sit down.
I was gonna bring it, but I didn't.
Oh, no, that's okay. Wendy.
That's on the other side. Yeah, that's on the other side of the rush, yeah. Yeah. If all of them get five hundred feet. And nine pack. Charles Robinson, the family sold that forever. Not quite for that. They're the ones that just cut off all that land, if you drive, drive down.
Oh, he's the guy clearing over there?
Yep, he's the one who cut all that off. Well, it's family, Charles, no one was like, but it was.
Very good.
So, do I just make that up to the planning?
No, make it out to the town of Monmouth.
What's the reference on it, just growing?
Yeah, this day, it's just shoreland zoning application and, and mailing fees.
Okay.
Would it out? And now to notice.
You're gonna go up, you're gonna go.
They are gonna come and visit, and there's a fellow that comes over from, obviously, Watershed District.
Yeah.
So the concern always is, you know, if you're doing work on the site, is it gonna create some runoff? Or phosphorus gonna be getting to the lake, that's gonna cause a lake to turn green, and are there are there measures that would be recommended to kind of mitigate any damage from the construction?
You'll notice on the plan, I show a proposed location that can be adjusted, erosion control. But basically, we're in, putting the existing building, like you give the contractor enough space to work, so he can leave there. I would recommend silt socks, or I think that's what they call it, erosion control socks. I don't go into any details.
Yeah.
I make reference to their contractors manual, available to the E P website, which is comprehensive on it all. No, the re, it does a lot of.
Unsure, this time we've been recommending, you know, that there might be some steps taken around the foundation, you know, to.
You know, like some crushed stone.
Yeah. My recollection is, I mean, there's very little slope here.
No, it's very.
Step on one end, and then.
Yeah.
I'm planning on taking care of it, I'm gonna get with the I'm gonna do the riprock thing, I think, on that shoreland anyway, I'm gonna talk to the E P on that, find out if I can do something, sort of in that shoreland, you know what I mean?
Shoreline, yeah. So you're willing to, might have to get permit by rule, Paul?
Or, or work, yeah.
Yeah, it's pretty standard.
Yeah.
Couldn't be any issue, but.
That's, we take pictures I already have with the plan, so let the E P to kind of hit your pocketbook again.
All right.
Okay.
Very good.
Well, you're listening. Take pictures. We'll have, we'll need posts.
Any possibility you can email me?
What are all the stuff in the PDF?
Well, the plan in a PDF would be good, so I can send it to Bill.
Yeah.
Unless you wanna run one over to him, if you're in the area.
Can do the whole application, but, but I just copied, cause I have everything with PDFs.
Yeah.
Copy it off on a PDF and stick and send it.
Yeah, if you could email it to me, that'd be great, cause then I can circulate it as. Okay.
The, Bruce Bill.
Bill is Bill Monagle, M O N A G L E. And he's the executive director of the Club of Watershed. So they get involved in any project in Monmouth that has an impact on any of the water body.
Okay, that's fine, I was just curious.
Check.
Yep.
So, the next item I had from Sean Whitey and Chelsea Dupaul, is that right? And, um.
Oh, that's to probably do the land survey and the lards, guys. I do have it in the application also. Um, what we're looking to do is just something square off our house and do a one-floor addition. Um, our, how, did think, and this was, um, went out on two thousand and one, we're looking to square this off, it's on the opposite side of the lake. We're just looking to do a master bathroom and walk-in closet.
We visit you.
You did.
Yeah, hard scape on the front.
We removed all of the wood.
Yeah.
That was on the front and changed it to, uh, stones, yeah.
Yeah. Um, okay. Did everyone get a copy of that? Application, send it out by email.
Yeah, so I had a, um, we have this here, so the land survey, just show the distance from the water. And then I also have the Hammond plans to show what we're looking at doing for the addition. It's about three hundred square feet, we're just doing one floor with a crawl space underneath.
You have your four-foot foundation?
What you're saying is you're just gonna run, continue running up from the back.
Correct.
Here and here, yeah, from here, from this point to this point back here, so this would be now in master bathroom. With a four-foot foundation underneath it?
It's like sixteen and a half by seventeen, so let's get mentioned out of it.
Just show three hundred square feet.
Three square feet.
The original one, yeah?
Yeah.
Greg, you want to see a copy of the application, do you have it?
I've got it.
Do they?
Yeah, you guys came up two years ago, we just.
Have my email open.
The application's mailing from it, there was another.
That's very flat, so who's this? Deep up from here, but this is very flat, it's lawn right now, so it's. Now, this is, or we were like forty-three, or like forty feet.
Right in the waters?
The garage is at a hundred feet from the water.
Everybody.
Well, I gotta hear it, but it's right.
Well, yeah.
Essentially, there's driveway, and then it's just flat, there used to be a door that would go down into the basement that we closed off. There's actually some existing concrete that we're moving and making the foundation for that.
Anyone want the location map on that?
No, we were there maybe two years ago.
You were there two years ago.
Want one, Mary, or?
I didn't go, my brother got it for me, I said, I want a really full brace, I haven't taken it off in two years. I went on a sail, I was on a sailboat for eleven days.
Really?
Well, manning helping, so.
Yeah, I haven't taken mine off, my brother went down there. Um, yeah, he's a lineman, so he helped restore after the damage.
Yeah.
And he was down there for a little over a month, and I was like, I expect something when you come back. That's what I got.
I don't know, that's that's not the application.
I have the, the code enforcer one that I did.
Yeah.
And then I submitted.
The one you sent.
Yeah, I sent it to you last, I think it was Tuesday or Wednesday.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't.
I'll see that it gets to everybody. I've got it here if anyone wants to, so it's, yeah, you put on a building, a one-floor addition with a four-foot crawl space. Clear off the existing structure, create a master bathroom.
Be doing a shed roof. Changing the pitch towards the water.
This is a parcel that's over the some quarters with a state.
Yeah.
Butters. So typically on, just like you heard on the last one. Really feel we need a site visit on shoreland. So if we did a site visit on June first, after the other one, five-thirty.
We can make it, we're flexible, we put every time he's available.
They're right.
Yeah, you guys are, need to be there.
So we're thinking, you know, six fifteen to six thirty. Probably, because we're in Cocknowag, and we gotta come all the way.
That's where.
I make a motion, accept the application.
You have a second? All in favor of accepting the application?
Let's make it six thirty, so.
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah, yeah, we're, we're there, it's whenever you guys are available, we'll make ourselves available.
So, uh, filings. I'd say if you can bring up a check for ninety dollars to the town.
Okay.
Town of Monmouth, just write on it, shoreland zoning.
Okay.
Application.
You can just drop that up anytime.
Yeah. They're open Monday through Thursday, they're open late on Monday till.
Monday, it's sick.
Yeah.
But normally it's like four.
Not, yeah. And, uh, we'll send a copy of the application to, obviously Watershed fellow, he came, I think, before.
He did, you guys came in the, yeah, the winter time.
Yeah, it was just, it's spring, it must have been in March, it's been in March.
Yeah, it's so snow.
It's still a bit snow.
Yeah, very pollution, well, so we'll come out there June first, then this will be on our agenda for June eighth to to hopefully be able to review it.
Okay. That works. All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
The next item we've got is, um, kind of discuss, um, building permit request that cabin masters filed for Dan Patrick, right? Four-way drive. So, this, I know what you're doing, but you could tell the board what, what the plan, what his.
Yeah, so, uh, heard just the last lot, and, uh, obviously led a date on Hoyt Drive last year. And we are, they're contracting his main house, uh, which is all framed in, and his barn. And, uh, he'd like to put this as a sexually dwelling structure, small cabin there, for his family and stuff to come up.
So this is kind of like a bunkhouse, but it's gonna have a bathroom?
Yeah, yeah, we oversize it, we've kind of designed all of it, known if you want that. So I did have a bathroom, it's locked, it's an act.
So there's a what the plan shows, as I recall, is a ten thousand square foot building area on these lots. And I discussed this with Bill Monagle last week. So we have, so from a subdivision standpoint. So we have, so from a subdivision standpoint, I think under our current ordinances, but what Bill felt from. From a phosphorus standpoint. That as long as this is constructed within the existing.
Oh, yeah. Uh. We approved it on the envelope.
Yeah, as, as long as it's built within the envelope. He thought that that was fine from a phosphorus standpoint. What we run into currently. Is, um. That. If you build an accessory structure. It cannot have kitchen facilities. Which means like no kitchen sink, basically. Um. The thought is that they don't want to create. Another. Kind of dwelling unit, so that as long as it's accessory in the main structure, doesn't have a kitchen.
Now, how does, um, ADU forty-three sixty-four affect that coming up?
Well, we haven't yet dealt with that in Monmouth. You know, and you're talking about the housing.
Yeah.
Issue. So that may change in the future. But currently, under Monmouth ordinances. That's sort of the limitation that you're, you're kind of limited. To one residential structure. The accessory use has to be. You know. Limited. But that may change.
I think on July first, it changes.
Well. So this is what's going on. There are several bills in the legislature. To kind of address it. One is to. So, so here in Monmouth, we haven't done any, we haven't gotten any direction from the Board of Selectmen. There have been no modifications to any of the ordinances. In town. So that was, that's sort of been the, the controversial matter is that. A lot of the small towns like Monmouth are saying, you know, we don't have. A full-time. Code and planning office. And so a lot of the towns like Monmouth haven't. Taken the steps to address. The issues. And so that, that could change in the, in the future.
And I read the law pretty well.
Yeah.
My mother works the legislature and I'm pretty sure you're gonna have to address it, right?
Well, so, so.
Look at number five, it says Shoreland zoning.
Yeah.
It says improved Shoreland zoning. And number eight, it says, the town's going to make the woods less stringent. But there's probably some wording that I don't understand.
Right. Well, so when.
How do we address that?
Yeah, so one of the issues is, so this is what I was gonna suggest, is that right now, we need a letter from the owner. Saying that until there is any change in the Monmouth ordinances. Or state law that supersedes the Monmouth ordinances. That he agrees that there'd be no. Um. Kitchen sink or cooking facilities in that building.
Even though.
And that.
So you guys.
So, well, cooking.
But what happens to July first, that law becomes law in the state?
Well, that's the question as to whether it is gonna become law.
It is, it is.
Well, no. The legislature.
But it isn't.
The legislature's in session. And they, one of the bill, there's several bills, as I understand it. One is to extend the deadline. One is to. Walk it back, you know, to make changes. And then there are several other variations. So the situation you have now is. It's May, it's not July. We don't have an ordinance. That law becomes effective July one, if it becomes effective. So that if. If Mr. Patrick wants to get a building permit. For that building now.
Just say there's not gonna be a kitchen.
And there's not gonna be a kitchen until, until there is a change in Monmouth ordinances. Or state law that supersede Monmouth ordinances. So he may be all right down the road, but right now. We need that in writing.
I can do that.
Um.
Isn't this the same issue that we had run into a year or two back with, uh, the Schneiders? With their pre-house.
Yeah.
And that where we had multiple habitable.
Structures.
Structures on. A, a given lot.
Right. And they had to be accessory to the main one, and they couldn't have a kitchen.
That's correct.
It can have a bath?
You can have a bath.
Yeah.
Bathroom's all right.
Can I grill?
But they don't want is, is like a kitchen sink.
Hopefully.
You know, because people can do hot plates.
Right.
Hot plates and microwaves. If they.
That law passed, we can test that afterwards.
Yeah. So that's why we wanted to come in to kind of explain. And it may change.
It's amazing. I go to Plaid of Woods all across the state.
Yeah.
Don't show land zoning in and out, and I still, every meeting I learn something different.
Yeah.
It's amazing.
Yeah.
Well, thank you.
If I may.
Right, yeah. It's like I explained to you last fall. Shoreland zoning is not the issue here. The issue is the approved subdivision in the building designated as Bill Monagle.
Yeah, the issue is the building on, uh, a lot being another habitable structure.
From by Hoyt.
Yeah.
It was all designed out and we were right at the limits of the stormwater.
Yeah. Yeah.
That's Shoreland zoning, if you were down, if that lot wasn't part of the subdivision. Or have these criteria for the phosphorus control on it. If it was, you went back a hundred feet. But you, like I said, that's why you had me down there last fall, is the state didn't building it alone.
Yeah.
So you knew where you were building. Anything outside of that, you're in violation of the subdivision.
Yeah.
No, we're, we're, we don't deliver it.
Does it want to have shoreland?
Yes, it does. Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
I wasn't sure exactly where in Hoyt. I haven't been down there entirely.
I've hit the T and take a left. It's the last one down there.
Okay. So it's the one closest to the boys camp then?
Go further.
Okay, all right, sorry.
Yeah, it's a girls' camp.
Yeah.
Well, thank you, guys.
Okay.
I'll keep an eye on that a little bit and see.
Yeah, we'll see what happens. I mean, it's gonna be interesting. As I say, we haven't got any, we haven't got any guidance. Select board.
Who knows what they'll pass or what they won't.
That we should be addressing this. They should take it up.
They should.
But I don't know, um. Our town manager is on, I think, the.
Executive Board.
Executive Board of Main Municipal. And so I think they're lobbying hard. To extend the deadline. Beyond July one, to give towns.
More time.
More time. Thank you, guys. Yeah, just get a letter to, um, Andy, the code enforcement.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
Take care.
Thank you.
Steve, what was, what was decided on?
This one?
Yes.
Okay. So we need, he need, the owner needs to submit us a letter. That says he understands. That he can have that building, they'll get a permit for it. But it can have.
And not have.
Cannot have a kitchen.
Kitchen or sink.
Or a kitchen, or a kitchen sink.
Yes, okay.
Un, unless and until. Uh, Monmouth. Ordinances change or. State law supersedes. Monmouth ordinances. Which may or may not.
Your agent kicked the law. We've got workforce policy.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean. Housing is a real problem.
But it's.
Real problem.
The later we get around to it, I know. Looking at the, the problem, how we, let it go. That's our good company. I'll save mine for public talk.
All right. So we're moving down. We're going pretty well through this.
Oh, it's true.
Um.
When you've got enough people here, it's.
Most things happen.
Yeah.
Okay, so, um.
Nobody can be sick.
Hey, Andy, did you hear that on the Cabin Masters? You there, Andy?
Maybe we can't hear.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, um, yeah, I did hear. Basically, you're gonna get the letter and they're gonna get it turned in to me.
Yes, and then you can give them a permit for that building.
Okay, that works for me.
Um. The other, I don't know if you were here, Mr. Willeck came in. And. I had sent out an email last week. Indicating that I thought that was a matter you could review. Uh, I mean, you have to do a site review. You, you need a site review application for him. And then you have to determine. That, you know, he meets that criteria.
Okay, I did miss that conversation.
Yeah, we, we can maybe talk on Monday while, when you're in the office. But what Dave Shaw used to do is it kind of have a. Kind of a mini hearing where he had determined that someone who was doing a, a business that fell under. Code enforcement, that it just met the requirements of the ordinance. So for instance. If they're putting in lighting, that that lighting isn't gonna disturb the neighbors, you know, that sometimes. They have to shield their lighting. Or if they're putting up a sign, that sign has to be, you know, a certain size.
Yeah.
Um. If he's got hazardous materials there like oil and things. That he's gonna properly store and dispose of it. It's sort of things like that.
Okay, and do we have to notify any butters on that one?
Yes. Yeah, so that's, that's the, so that's what Dave used to do is.
Okay.
Is he, he had gathered, give an application and then he'll say, okay, two Mondays from now, I'm gonna be reviewing this. If you have any objections. You know, let us know.
Okay, sounds like a plan.
Um, yeah, um, I'm sorry, we, you know, we kind of didn't communicate on it, I guess, but.
No, that's okay. And I missed the very beginning of the meeting. I had a plumbing issue I had to take care of, so.
Yeah.
I missed the beginning, so, yeah.
Yeah. So we, we told him to get in touch with you on Monday. And, uh. I referred him to where he could find the ordinance. On the website for. Or the application for site review. But it looks like he has, he has an existing building there. So I think you're just looking that he. He meets the performance standards. For a business in what is mostly a residential. Area. Now, it's a home occupation too, so maybe we should talk about it on Monday morning. Or when are you gonna be in on Monday?
I'll be in at ten.
Okay. Why don't I plan? Yeah, why don't I plan to touch base with you on Monday morning?
Okay, that sounds good.
All right. Okay, so then we have on the agenda Stevens Farm. And. I'm sorry, you are?
I'm sorry. My name is, my name. My name is Margot Smith.
Yeah.
And I own Stevens Farm and Gray Houses. Um. And. I think you have a copy, maybe Andy gave you a copy.
Yes.
Something like that?
Yeah.
Didn't. And I may have penciled a little bit on this one.
No, that's all right. I got one somewhere too.
And I am in no. Uh, shape to. Talking about an application yet, but then that was the Andy, and he suggested that I get on the agenda to have a. Um, this conversation.
Yeah.
It's pre-application conversation. Because my thoughts might involve something called a flag lot. Which, which he said may, may be a little bit different. But, um.
Well, so right now, all the property is one lot. Is that right?
Right, but this is one lot, and I've owned it since two thousand and sixteen.
And so you're proposing.
I, I'm.
To create three, three more lots?
Well, I'm not, I'm not sure.
We're not sure.
What I was saying, um. Um, you know, I have some options. I've, I've got a serious, um, health situation. And, um. And what I'd like to be able to do is access the equity in the property, um. Keep my daughter in business.
Yeah.
Uh, long, longer term, you know, one option is to, you know. Um, sell, sell the whole thing, and I have people that are interested in doing that. That, that's really not what we want. That's not what I want. Um, so, but I, I don't want to get into a lengthy. Um, you know, approval process or anything like that. So I'm kind of trying to feel out what, what the situation might be. You talk about housing, you know. My mind's eye, I could see three beautiful duplexes for older folks like myself that might have some mobility issues all on one level.
Yeah.
Out there. But I don't know how to get from here to there. You know?
So is there an existing road there now?
There is, there is not. However, um, I do have a road partially built out behind here. Uh, with a eighteen-inch gravel base that I, that I use currently. Um, just for farm to access. I have a perennial field out in here. So I had a road built.
Yeah.
That goes right off the driveway out here. So I, I have part of this road built currently. And I have, uh, a contractor that's very interested in, in, um. Trading loan, which he can't get any off, uh, from, from the field in order to, um. Build a road to code, uh, to access this whole back area. But.
This whole lot.
Yes, sir.
Is that sixty-seven one?
Uh, yes, it is. Yeah.
Yeah.
And that little jog that you see right there is this little jog right there. But I, I believe there's plenty of distance here. There's, there's about, um, sixty feet here between, between. Um, if you go ten feet off the garage that goes with the farmhouse. Which is a three-unit farmhouse now, since it's all done in the past. Um. There's, uh, with a ten-feet, a ten-foot setback, uh, there's about sixty feet here to, to be able to make, to access this whole back area. So I, I don't know if I'm looking at. Yes, I have a copy of that.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Are you looking at three lot here?
Um.
Or no, here.
Well, I don't.
Three.
I was, I was looking possibly to sell, uh, just this back access.
Okay.
Um. If I were to sell this one just as a buildable lot, which, which I believe it would, would be, I would probably have to sell it with an easement to exit. Um, because seventy-five feet goes right to the middle of the zip.
Yeah.
But I, there's plenty of acreage here in order to sell a buildable lot here between myself and over this.
That I was, I was wondering if one might want to. Those. Maybe sell it.
Right.
Provide the two lot, then have lot one access here, and then lot two access.
Could you say, oh, yeah?
Yeah. They're saying, good if you look to. Provide two lots, you have lot one have an access here and lot two there. So that you didn't have to have an easement across lot one into lot two.
And.
So, you know, like a driveway here and then the driveway there.
And, and not have enough, let's say, of a lot here for a third one, cause that was your suggestion?
I, I'm not sure. I don't, I can't tell from this whether there's adequate acreage there or not.
Haven't had it surveyed and divided up. I just wanted to have this preliminary conversation before I, what are the expenses doing?
Yeah.
Doing that.
So, well, let's, let's just look first at what you got there as lot three, just, just to discuss that. So that lot has to have. Is this sewer and water?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, sewer and water.
Seventy-five feet.
So it's a hundred fifty feet frontage?
Right.
Seventy-five.
Seventy-five on.
Seventy-five feet frontage, you know, at fifteen thousand square.
Okay.
Yeah.
So you've got a buildable lot, lot three.
Correct.
Um.
But that would preclude me, the minute I saw that, that would preclude me from selling anything else.
Well, so this is, let, let's just step back. So there's something called subdivision. And if you create. Three lots. In a five-year period. You are required. To file for subdivision approval for the lots. Okay? And so you have basically four lots, as, as you've got, you know, your existing lot would be one.
With a business.
With a business there. Then you've got the one next to it on. On Main Street, and then you have the two other lots. So you could have potentially. If. A four lot. Or even maybe even more than four lot subdivision. And that would require you. Yeah, to, to have a surveying plan. To show where those lots are, where their boundaries are. And where the road, you know, the access to those lots would be. Um. Then you run into issues. With. What's called stormwater management and phosphorus. Which you have to determine that, that you're not creating. Condition that needs to be mitigated in some way. condition that needs to be mitigated in some way. So in order to do that, you really need, you know, a surveyor or planner to help you lay that out. But you have the potential for that. And, you know, it's a site that you don't have a lot of slope there. I don't think there's a lot of streams or wetlands in that property as far as I remember.
It's mostly like farm.
Back away from the road.
So one of the issues, of course, is, yeah, you have to have some kind of access to those back lots. And that access has to be a minimum width and has to be, you know, constructed in a way that, again, is not gonna create runoff problems or.
Those, those lots have, would have to be a minimum of, of two acres in order for them to be buildable, if not on town sewer, is that correct?
Right, forty thousand.
They have to be forty thousand.
You don't extend the sewer back into there, you have to be forty thousand.
Yeah. So sometimes you look at, well, it's that, and, and know what the sewer district would say, but you're.
We can't afford to extend the sewer, we'd obviously, but they'll take it over.
Right. But they would have to, but potentially, would the sewer district allow someone to run to those back lots?
They would.
If somebody pays for it, they'll, they'll take it over.
I know, I know, this is aside, we're having a public hearing to raise the rates on June sixth. Our revenue's going down. We're losing buildings and users than we're gaining. That's, that's a problem in town, but uh, but destiny there. So yes, we have a capacity, we, we would certainly.
What's the regulation on how, like how far back from the, from the sewer that you, you have to hook up? Is that correct?
Right now, it's two hundred. But we discussed changing. Day was two hundred. That's the controversy out there, place that died three-four Main Street.
Is that, is this, oh, is the state law the minimum or the maximum, two hundred?
That's minimal. Anything within two hundred feet, you have to hook into the sewer.
Okay.
But the catch-all is, is not just the building, it's any part of the drain fields in there. That's, that's the problem, building on nine-three-four Main Street. Building is a two hundred and two feet. You put a septic system in, that's a hundred and seventy feet. They should have hooked it in.
So you may have heard, you know, the fellow who was in before you was talking about this new state law that's coming in. And that may lead towns to, to make some changes in their ordinances. One of the problems that we kind of run into in subdivisions is that there has to be a minimum road frontage, so those back lots. I think, under current rules, we'd have a problem with potentially have to look at that. Again, I, I, I don't know, I have to look at that. Pardon me?
I know, even under the flag lot provisions of it, it has to meet the width of the lot size for that area.
Yeah.
Unless they're on sewer, it has to be two hundred feet.
Right. That's, that's kind of a drawback for that back land. Um, there are sometimes ways to get around it, but I, you know, I, I, I don't think, you know, you can probably create something on lot one. But lot two would have a problem, I think. I don't know, even to see if we can find something on that.
Well, if they ran, just consider if they ran out a road up here instead of going a lot. If, if they ran a road up here, instead of going a lot one and lot two, if it was something like, yeah, this was lot one and that was lot two.
Steve. So one of the things that I was just gonna mention, I kind of mentioned to her that she maybe will get from you guys, but if she decides that she wants to sell this off as one lot and put the problem on to someone else, she would just wanna know, I guess, what, what she could do, because I know we talked about it, but what she could do in order to, again, if, if she wanted to sell it to, to at least give them what they needed, so they could go in through the process of potentially having a subdivision down the road too. So that's kind of for her to have that information, because again, she's looking for options at this point, and I told her you guys could give her that, but um, I think even if she sold it all as one lot, she may still have some value in the real estate thing if someone could look at doing all those things, even if she didn't wanna take it on herself. Does that make sense?
Yeah. I'm just looking at four point one point six on flag lot. Minimum corridor width shall be thirty feet. Not included in the frontage if owned by flag lot. Or the frontage on a private, public road shall be thirty feet minimum. Lot width shall be twenty, two hundred feet minimum. Excluding access without public sewer. Lot area should be forty thousand square feet. Travel away twenty feet. Some, so there's some road requirement.
If I remember correctly, too, she had two points of road frontage that she may have been able to make that up. So that was the thing, there's one side. And then there's another side. The problem is that they are separate. I don't remember how much it came up to, if you're looking at it, but she, she thought, if I remember correctly, there was some frontage on the left side of, of the road frontage, and then also on the right.
Yeah, on her sketch, she's marked the right, there's a road up in.
I may not have seen that sketch you're looking at either, I'm not sure. That may be different than what I saw.
It, it is, Andy, I, we, it is, it's different.
Okay.
Excuse me, Margot, do you have a road going, did you tell me once that you have a road going right there to pass the greenhouse?
I, I, I do, I traded some loan over here in order to hit, in order um, to have enough gravel pad behind, just to be able to access the backs of the greenhouses to unload them on that side.
Yeah.
Um, so it, it's a partial road.
Would you be able to access that way, and uh, to that, to lot two?
Um, if.
Or could you do it on the other side?
I would need. It would have to be thirty feet from the back end of the greenhouse.
The edge of the road would have, the edge is right away, the easement for the road.
Um, no, that would, that would capture the gravel for the greenhouse.
How about, how about on this side over here, could you, you do it on Eldred's side, yeah? Still have enough for a front, uh, front lot there?
I think so, as long as one of two things, um, sell it with an easement to exit, or move my exit.
Yeah.
Which I could do that, move the cupboard, move it.
Yeah, so I, I guess, you know, one possibility is you could probably could sell those two, the land behind you and meet the flag lot requirements. Then you're passing that on to somebody else. And that's, that would be one transaction, you're just selling that four acres.
Yeah.
And then it's on that person, if they wanna try to take it further, but and you still might be able to do something on lot three, but.
In five years.
Well, you could wait five years, or you could do the subdivision. I mean,
Yeah.
Somebody like Paul could tell you what kind of cost you might run into doing a subdivision. It, it isn't as bad as some people think it is, but there is a cost. A lot of times you can, you know, you're gonna make that up on what you sell the land for, but.
Appreciate your time.
You're gonna have to figure out what, what would work, you know, what works for your existing business. But, and, and again, you know, after July one or down the road, we may be changing a lot of our ordinances to encourage more development, especially, you know, in, in Main Street area where.
Sure.
Where.
Beautiful, I mean, I thought eight years ago that there'd be a lot of uh, uh, more boat farming, but the conditions aren't right for that anymore. It's a great greenhouse spot.
You've got a good location.
Love it, absolutely love it.
It's not your busy season.
It is.
It's Mother's Day.
This is the weekend.
Right, yeah.
Yeah. Can't believe it's been eight years already. Yeah, thank you very much. Hey, thank you.
So we've got our, um, we've got our February and, um, March minutes that never have been approved, because I think at the March meeting, we didn't have the right people. And we didn't have a regular April meeting. So I've got, I only bought one copy of each of these. We have February twelfth minute. And that was the one, I think, that we, we had a public hearing in February on, um, in Acorn, Acorn for South Monza. And we had a meeting discussion, which was a pre-application with, um, Linkstar. And we also had some limited discussion, I think, on um, on the acorn. So that was what was on February minutes. Do we have a motion to approve those? Any discussion, any corrections? I think we made some, but we, I think we talked about them, Ray, but we didn't have enough people to vote.
No, it was just a fencing noise, and you said, no, karma will take care of that.
Yeah. So all in favor of accepting the February minutes?
Rick, you couldn't. What's that? I said you couldn't vote on the February minutes.
Oh, we have Bonnie and, and Dave and Rick, so. Bonnie, you were at the February meeting.
Yep.
Yeah. Do you vote to approve the minutes?
I do.
All right.
Yeah, so, yeah. Larry, Bonnie, and myself.
Yeah, so four zero, the other two abstain.
Were absent.
They were absent. All right. Then we have the March minutes. Them somewhere. So at the March meeting, we did the formal review of the solar project. So there were findings and conclusions. Um, and we met Andy, I think. And we discussed sort of our struggles with the lack of or the office, town office for the planning board. Any motion on those March minutes?
Move that we accept the March minute says presented.
Any discussion? All in favor? So that one would be Ray, me, Dave, and Rick. So it's again four or two abstain. Four zero, two abstain. All right. Then we can kind of look what else we got.
Other business.
Other business. So, my understanding is the, you know, we have this policy and remote participation policy, which was sort of came from the select board. Um, I don't know if the select board has done anything with this.
Well, we voted on it, and it was approved three to two.
Right. Um.
The problem I have with this remote policy, we're not adhering to it.
Well, now, I mean, today, I think, was the official end of the COVID. Whatever you wanna call it.
That's correct.
Um.
Yes, go.
So, the emergency's over. We have no emergency right now. So what we so, I know the, the select board has been having members still participate. Now, there was a meeting we were at, and um, one of the members was in Florida and zoomed in. The one might have been somewhere else, I can't remember, but. Um, so I think you're right, Ray, the issue is you know, in terms of members, should they be present at a meeting unless one or two applies? So I, I'm not sure we need to change it, but it's a matter of people adhering to what the requirements are.
It states, you know, the exceptions with illness or being out of the area or whatever, which is what took place in April. We had illness and people on vacation. No quorum.
Well, that was, that was more of a problem that, I mean, I was surprised you didn't have a quorum, because usually if people aren't coming, they send an email.
And we didn't get that.
And there was no email from anyone. Now, I understand, I think what happened is the wrong link information was on the agenda. Because when I reviewed this month's minutes that, our agenda that Darcy prepared, I looked and it was not the correct Zoom connection. And so I think what happened, I don't know, Bonnie, did you try to join the meeting?
I absolutely did, I tried for a half hour.
Yeah. And so I think, but did you use the link on the agenda, or did you go to the?
No, I did, I did the, um, what I did tonight, which was using the, um, I go to my Zoom and then I put in those numbers, and I checked the numbers that are on tonight's agenda were the numbers that were on April's agenda.
No, they weren't. They weren't.
They were, because I got it, I had it written down.
Because when I looked at the, when I looked at the April agenda, I compared what was on the April, well, the, the, the agenda I got for for this meeting had the wrong
Okay.
information. So that's why I wondered whether that was on the April one. Now, I never, maybe I didn't look at April.
The numbers on the April agenda were the same as the numbers on the revised agenda for tonight, because I used those and it was fine. So, and I didn't actually, because I saw the emails, I didn't even bother looking at the others, which may have had the wrong numbers, but I tried those numbers in April and for a half hour, could not get in. So, I don't know. The thing is, I mean, without going into details. evenings are difficult for me. But I have been zooming for three years now and I've zoomed all over the place and taken classes and have had no issues. I made, able to make some meetings during the warmer weather. But it's just evenings are difficult for me.
The, I'm afraid just gave me the April agenda and it has a different login
Really?
than what I have on our agenda tonight.
Okay, well, I just.
So I, I think that might have been the problem because I don't, I didn't converse with John, but John, so hopefully we won't have that problem going forward, but
Yeah.
But the problem, Bonnie, is the policy. I mean, I guess the question is, do you have a physical condition that prevents you from attending the meeting in person? Because that's, if, if you don't, then it's expected that you, you come. Now, sometimes I know John has liked this because he's told me that sometimes he's on duty and he can kind of participate remotely. So that's a, that may be all right. But it is, I don't know, temporary absence. I mean,
But the problem is if you've got a plain basic application and you can get away with it via Zoom. When you start getting into some more technical and complicated applications, there's no way in God's world that you can deal with that by your Zoom.
Especially if you can't print documents. If you can't print, print documents at your own house to review, that becomes an issue as well.
Well, there's supposed, there's supposed to be a way that we can display documents on the Zoom screen. I mean, I don't know how to do it because I'm not, you know, you've got to have some technical person.
That's, that's as long as you have it on PDF file.
Right.
But tonight, look, he came in with two sets of document data, but it's all paper.
Yeah.
Yeah, or maps, you know, you kind of need to look at them.
Right, yeah.
It's spread out.
Yeah, it's helpful to see a map. So I don't, I mean, I guess, as I say, it's, it's a matter that, you know, from your standpoint, Bonnie, yeah, if, if you can't drive at night, say, because of vision or something, that's, that's one thing that might allows you to Zoom. But there has to be some reason other than it's more comfortable to be at home. I mean, it has to be a, well, if we read the policy, right?
That's correct. If, I mean, I, I was not able to attend April because both my wife and I came, became ill that afternoon.
Yeah.
So I.
And sometimes even if you're ill, you don't want to sit at a meeting because you feel, you know, your head's spinning and
Yeah.
You know, it happens, things happen, so.
Like Bonnie's situation. It would, if she doesn't want to drive after dark, then she's got to convince somebody drive for her. Plain and simple as that. Okay? Because a lot of these applications, if you're not present, you cannot properly evaluate decisions on them.
And I accept that. I understand that. In fact, I was going to ask Darcy if you could put a packet together with the information that came and I can pick it up on Monday at the town office?
Yeah, my availability to go to the town office is only on Wednesdays.
Okay, I'll pick it up on Wednesday then.
So I have had communication with Lori. She has no problem with me putting packets together.
Okay.
Putting names on them and leaving them at the front desk with the girl.
Fine.
You know, so they can, they can distribute documents.
Okay. Did you discuss the timeframe for those packets being available with Lori or?
No, because she knows that my availability is only on Wednesdays to go up there, Wednesdays in the afternoon. I haven't talked to her about getting a key to go in or anything. I have met with Andy. Andy has showed me where everything is that, you know, where he's putting everything concerning the planning board, so I can go in and copy everything. And Justin showed me where tax maps were. Um, but that's the best that I can do is just copy applications and tax ma, tax maps and leave them for somebody to pick up. But I can only go up there on Wednesday afternoons.
Okay, so their applicant cutoff is five o'clock Tuesday week prior to the meeting.
Right.
And so, so she.
If she goes in on Wednesday, that's perfect, really.
You're, you're correct. In most, most planning boards that I've ever been involved in or sat on and that, they have a cutoff that is sometime earlier in the week prior to the meeting.
Right.
And if you come cruising in on the following morning, it's too bad. You have to wait till the next month. It has to be some, to your point, it has to be some realistic timeframe. Can't come running in on Wednesday afternoon going here. I want this people to board. That doesn't work real well.
Does it have to be a week?
A week prior.
A week.
Yeah. So, so everything should be in by 5:00 PM on Tuesday.
The ordinance is five business days.
Well, I, I think Linda had that changed, didn't she?
The ordinance, I went through and run them. The ordinance currently still says five business days. So if you, I don't know whether that five starts with the day of the meeting. In other words, would today be one, today be the Wednesday, Monday? I don't know. It's an open Friday. It's a business day there.
But it is a business day.
Right, yeah.
So, I mean, you, no, so there's.
So the complaint we had run into, Paul, was people were claiming that the planning board agendas didn't get posted website. So people would want to see, they'd be interested, you know, in something particular that they heard about. So we, we, now that we've got Darcy, we might be able to be a little more consistent.
Maybe we could petition the selectmen to establish that the Tuesday of the week prior to is a cutoff date. I mean, if they put it up on the.
That makes it about ten days.
I'm sorry?
Ten business, that's, that's, it's about ten business. Again, but you have one business day in there. Friday, town office is open. Now, that's a problem.
Right, it's not a business day for the town, disposed.
You're right, Paul, in saying that the ordinance still says five working days. Not business, but working days.
Yeah.
But our previous town manager got that changed to ten.
Where? It's not in the ordinance, right?
Well, it's somewhere in black and white.
You can't arbitrarily, the previous town manager can't previously.
She could do anything she wanted. Now she's back in South Portland. We don't have to worry about her.
Can arbitrarily make rules, but that's, that's an issue.
I'll, I'll find it because I got it in black and white somewhere.
You want to change the ordinance?
I was looking for our planning board rule.
Or take it out of the rules. It's a naked, in the rules. Because first thing, I as a consultant, that's going to do, I'm going to go to the ordinance and the ordinance is five business. Five working, there you go.
And we're working with ten because it got changed.
They did change blocking.
Now it's going to go to the public to get it. Yeah, change it.
No, exactly.
Uh, we've got something in black and white that changed it to ten days. You know what it is? Davidson email that she forwarded.
To us?
Yes.
And wanted to change it. Change the limits.
That, yeah, it had been approved by the selectmen to go to ten days.
Yeah.
Then you got to come back and change the ordinance. Do we have it though?
Well, I have because I made a notation.
No. But even, even that's problematic because like with anything else, it just said ten days. Is it ten business days? Is it ten working days? Ten calendar days?
It says working days.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
It has to be whenever the town office is open, correct? It's a working day. And if they close on Fridays, then
It's not a working day.
It's not a working day. I mean, you know, being somebody on.
In other words, municipal officials of the town office are not available. Simple as that.
Is that include the CEO?
Yeah. Oh, the CEO has specific hours.
Whatever you guys end up coming up with is make sure I'm filled in because obviously I'll need to tell people the.
Yeah, yeah. We'll look at this. What page do you want, Ray, with that? Uh, page 21 at 6221, application for review. All right. Five working days prior to the planning board meeting. So, so we have three. Well, I suppose if you call Thursday, because we meet at seven, or that would really mean the Thursday before. But if we, if we say it's, we don't count that day, then it would be Wednesday, which would fit in with Darcy's schedule. So if, if we take the position that, no, the Thursday doesn't count, then we're back to the Wednesday before. Tuesday. Well, but, but we have to amend the ordinance.
The selectmen have to amend it?
No, the town.
It's not going to stay and change it. It has to go to approved by the public.
By the legislative body, the legislative body and the town of Monmouth is the voters of the town of Monmouth.
Okay, somebody has got to counsel to Justin or the chair of selectmen find out exactly what meeting they approved that changed and what the language is.
Well, but they can't, they can't change it. I just decided not to fight Linda because I, I was fighting her at every step.
What do you mean you?
The world.
Too, too bad you didn't win decisively.
Yeah, well.
Oh, you did. She left. But, yeah.
Yeah, no, it, it's there somewhere. I know the, the selectmen approved of that change.
So I have to go back and look at them.
Yeah, we'll ask, we'll, I'll email Jason and say, this is what we're, we reviewed this. This is the way it appears to us that the five working day rule applies. I mean, I think it's good to get the agenda up, you know, the week before.
Yeah.
And sometimes you make a change, like we made a change. We took
Today.
One buddy, somebody off last minute. Um, because again, I've got to check to make sure I'm sending emails to the right place. But anyway.
I think Justin should be made aware a little bit more than just that issue too. He should look at that remote policy because it states the general public is to have access to all information and documentation that the planning board members have access to.
Well, that's right. So, so all the applications are supposed to be, so if you go to like the planning board meeting tonight, what should be there is the agenda and copies of all. You know, we, we have to change the ordinance to require a PDF copy so that can be put on the calendar. So I think we need to propose an amendment that addresses, first of all, how many days in advance? Secondly, what's submitted? Another issue is how a butters get noticed, whether it should just be regular mail. Would save a fortune. And you know, there may be some other kind of housekeeping things, but we don't have enough time to get that. This, if there is a ballot issue in November, we can try to get something on the November ballot.
I think there will be a vote in November. But, uh, yeah, it's, it's not going to happen before.
Right, right. Because I don't think, I mean, I don't know how many people want paper copies? How many of the members want a paper copy?
I kind of like it.
You, okay.
I do.
But, but so I suppose then we have seven members. We, and you know, it's whether the code enforcement would like a paper copy too. See, that was the theory is that you had, you'd have nine copies. Every member would get one. And code enforcement would get one and there'd be one in the office that could be reviewed. That was the theory behind the nine.
Let's see, I guess I asked this question last month with the nine copies. Isn't the codes officer in the co, in the town office? Why can't the codes officer copy be made if somebody wants to come in and look at it? I, I mean, I personally, Steve, I, I consider nine copies. It used to be five, now it's grown to nine.
Well, no, but you've got to have one for every member.
Well.
I mean, you, it's, it's a question whether you're putting the burden on the town office or you're putting the burden on the applicant.
Yeah, I, I mean, it's five, but personally, I think if we could deliver a P, you know, a USB stick or something like that, then everybody can.
See, the problem we run into is we don't have, they, they don't have enough staff.
And there isn't a printer in the, in the town offices. They have to make those big copies.
Not on the plans.
Right, exactly.
No, but they can be produced as a PDF. And I know, and I've heard this complaint from many points. I had to pick on attorneys, but particularly attorneys looking at, they want the paper copy. They, they don't know how to use Adobe Reader. It's totally scroll around.
Yeah, yeah.
So, because John do that. I, I'm just trying to, it, it helps expedite things.
Yeah. Well, I think what we do at a later meeting is we come up with whether we need to put some amendments forward.
I think that's a great idea.
And what they're going to be, you know, and as I say, I think the notice requirements, the filing deadlines, the copies. I mean, I, see, we don't say a PDF copy and I think absolutely we need a PDF copy. Because if we send stuff to somebody, it's so much easier to send it by PDF. Yeah.
The other thing.
Just, you know, worked with a team on a big project retirement. They only had to live with two, two part copies and the rest was all in PDF.
Yeah. Well, and if you get a PDF, I mean, as I say, if, if that comes within, you know, if we, if we lower the submission requirement, see, one of the things we're doing is I'm, that's sort of another item is, is the fee structure, but I don't, I don't have that together, my recommendation, but I'm going to be recommending some significant increases in fees. And if that means that a person can come in and just give us one copy and somebody in the town office makes them for everybody else. Well, the applicant's going to be paying for that through their fee. But the justification for raising fees is to make sure we have enough money to pay for code enforcement and support for code enforcement and the planning board.
Yes, I mean, getting stuck in a PDF like the PDF does in a PDF, a lot of times you don't, I, I personally don't have the printing facilities to print it, do something big enough so that it's legible and you don't have to spend time with a magnifying glass to do it. It's like, nobody's sending you, and I know they've sent it to me, a set of building plans. You know, they, it, it, it's not, it's not really feasible to, to get them and adequately review them.
Right. Now, it depends on the project.
And that's true, right.
Yeah, but do you have Adobe Reader?
I'm sorry?
You have Adobe Reader.
Yes. Yes.
All you have to do is just move into that area you want to see.
Steve.
Yes.
It to the, to that point though, then it takes the onus off the, the applicant and puts the onus on, on the board members. You know, I, I, I'm not sure everybody has hours upon hours to spend in front of the computer reviewing it.
Steve stays up till one, two o'clock in the morning doing this stuff.
And he can print them and distribute them to everybody else. That's easier. Take it to our copies are us up in, up on two oh two. You go in and say, I have this PDF and I want.
Andy, what was your thought?
This size print.
Yeah, so all I was going to say is, is obviously the expense of printing everything that you guys have mentioned is, is something to consider, you know, to take into consideration, but uh, the biggest piece for me is I still think as of right now, what I've inherited now and, and I'm much more new school than Dave. I, I kind of do old school and new school, but I really think based on the current capabilities we have at the town office that we still need that hard copy. I don't think we're anywhere ready for, um, getting everything fully PDF at this point anyways.
Issues that we gotta look at if. The ordinance states with the, uh, right plans, that we need a location map. And these tax maps are exactly what they're talking about. They say you need a eleven by seventeen inch location map with the application, which I've been doing for years.
Well, yeah, and I think it's, I mean, sometimes on the plans, like Paul would do a plan, his plan would have on it the location map.
Yeah, exactly.
But it may not be to that size, but.
No, that's fine.
But we have to look at all of those because you don't want to make it too burdensome for people. I mean, I felt bad because there was no April meeting, so I kind of, like these people in Dupont, I said, you know, they didn't know they needed to file a particular application. I said, you got to file this. So I let them come in tonight because they were kind of in line. But we have to look at, do you really need? You know, do you need the location map? Some of you might.
Yeah, like Myers, Rick knew where the structure was. I don't know if you did. I had no clue where the hell Spruce Lane was until I went down there and decided I wasn't going to get stuck.
See, I don't worry about that until we have it, the application and we're here and then next, you know, by the site visit, I want to know where I'm going. But.
See, and what I picked up on that application when they were talking at the not, April nine meeting is he had two of butters. Okay, and I says, whoa, this is what I see here is more than two of butters.
Well, he had two of butters. Butters are direct. Ordinance requires within five hundred feet.
Yeah.
Now you got two. That's the difference, right? Don't confuse. He only has two of butters. He has one for us and now it's full, full.
Well, you know, that's, knowing that ahead is awful much, okay, so we don't have to play screw around later in the process.
So Andy from, if, if you talk to somebody, I think you tell them you have to give us nine copies and we, we also request you give us a PDF, even though it's not in the ordinance yet. We, we should have one PDF copy just because otherwise it's very hard to, to copy a plan with the, with our capability in the town office. So I think that would be the guidance you give an applicant. If you're coming to the planning board, you've got nine paper copies you have to provide. And we also request you either email me or email you a PDF copy.
Wouldn't the PDF copy be good for someone like Bill Monago?
Well, that's it. Yeah, usually. I mean, on some of the projects, yeah, he's going to want a big map, but he hasn't. You know, we suggest to some people, you know, can you bring a cop, drop a copy of the plan off at his office?
Size do they have to be? Like you, can't you do a smaller size than the, the real, real big one?
Uh, normal size is twenty four by thirty six. I mean, you can do a reduced scale. Get it down on any size other than that. I mean, what you typically see is it'll, it'll, when you go in Adobe and you have that and you say it's a shrink to fit, it'll, it'll make it fit on an eight and a half. But I could use any other size of paper.
Right.
I can use an eleven by seventeen.
Right, that's what I was thinking. Those, those are pretty legible, eleven by seventeen.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. I'm not gonna lie, I do like the big one, you know, you see a lot.
Yeah.
You don't like strain your eyeballs, dude. Okay, let me ask. Does anyone else see a value in this eleven by seventeen? Okay, this is a tax map. Okay, so all I do is go up to the counter and I'll ask Dolores or Kim. This is a lot, map, lot number. Can you punch this up for me?
But it's on the, all those maps are on the website.
Yeah.
And they're also in the photocopy room. Just so you know, there's a stack of them and they're in order. So when I copied all these applications, I found the map that went with each application and photocopied it. You know.
And you found it where?
Right in the, right where I made all the photocopies. They're all sitting right there.
That's the one thing I talked to you about. Tax map's on the website. They're four years, five years out of date, six years out of date. I think it's built within twenty six.
Right, yeah. I don't know how, I don't know who's keeping them current.
They have to last, nobody.
You know, I don't think anybody's keeping anything that's changed.
Okay, that's my problem with dropping things off at the town office. Just hold the town office too well. I'm afraid it's going to get lost. You're taking the effort, you do nine copies in it, you take it in and then it doesn't get to you, people?
Plus.
Wow, but that's, you know, yeah, I, I, that's great. And, you know, wonderful, but they haven't had that support in many years.
Yeah.
Hey, you know, you're not going to sound like Maya.
No, no, it's not. We're at the charm Fairchild.
The Celtics are winning. What the heck?
Yeah, that's cool.
All right, there you go.
They're up by seven at halftime.
All right.
You go to Who's, you know, there, you've got to stay here so they win.
That last game.
So I had some things on there.
Yeah.
One is on this and workforce housing stuff. Because I, working with a potential developer for the old Lightwool website on Academy Road.
Yeah.
And I know the density requirements, you know, straightforward, but it makes provisions if it's senior housing. And I, because this workforce housing thing, news, I was, I was wondering if your first housing would apply to that. Probably the way the ordinance is, I told them, no, the way the ordinance is written, not.
Right, we haven't done anything. We haven't gotten any kind of push from the, you know, the select board hasn't asked us to do anything.
I think that's something that we need to look at in the ordinance because I've worked on several projects now uh, for workforce, specifically developer workforce housing. Not here in Monmouth.
Right.
And the other thing that's on the comment is the ordinance is on the town website regarding the road ordinance. It's not the correct ordinance. That's the old one. It was replaced. Something like that. So you want to go back through and look at that.
Yeah.
But anyway.
All right, motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Not debatable.